We thank you, Lord, for loving us and caring for us, Lord. And we thank you for this opportunity to serve the people of this fine county, Lord. And we pray, Lord, that those that are bereaved, those that are sick, that you will comfort them, only you can do, Lord. And we pray, Lord, that all we did today will be keeping what I will, Lord, that we might seek your guidance in all that we do. Once again, we thank you for this opportunity to serve this county of Marion County, the best of our ability with your help. We give it where we feel, Lord, these things, that precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting is ordered. I need a motion to approve meetings.
I don't like that motion.
Second?
All in favor? I need a motion to approve the claims. All in favor?
Good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. Thank you very much for the opportunity to allow me to come and visit with you this morning and speak to you if you'd been at the State of Alabama. It's a bird compensation program. We are actually very excited to be able to first have the opportunity to just be here to present this option to you and also to go to really, we feel like, make a stronger impact within the state across all the local government municipalities than there really has ever been done before. Again, my name is Jennifer Leonard and I actually work for Empower Retirement. We administer the State of Alabama Personnel Board's Deferred Compensation Program. Some of you may be familiar with RSA-1. That one is administered by the Retirement Systems of Alabama. This plan has actually been in place for a little bit longer than RSA-1, but until 2012 really was only available to state employees. But in 2012, legislation was passed that allowed for most local government municipalities to be able to hop on to the state's deferred compensation program. But there was one caveat out there. The counties were actually excluded from that legislation. We've had some noise from counties over the last couple of years. They obviously wanted to participate, but as per state law at that time, they weren't allowed to. So earlier this year, the legislation was amended and now it does allow for any and all counties across the state to be able to hop onboard with the state's deferred compensation program. So really, what this does for all of you and your employees is it does give them an opportunity to save additional monies for retirement into a program that is, again, sponsored by the State of Alabama. They assume all fiduciary and administrative responsibility of the plan. So you, as a county, don't bear any of that oversight responsibility, including the cost of administering this program. So you can administer, or you can offer, rather, this program to your employees through your employer path, I guess I could say. And again, it doesn't cost the counties anything to participate in this program. But one of the key advantages is this will really significantly, we feel, help your employees to be much more, much better positioned for retirement. We actually have a licensed counselor in this area. Jessica Crumbly is her name. She can come out, visit with your employees, conduct department meetings. And actually, not just can she, but we're actually required by the state to be able to offer these services to any and all joining entities. So she would be required to partner with you all at the county level to provide retirement education services, really that we feel will be, you know, in partnership with you, the most beneficial for you and your employees. So most of the cities or counties that have joined, and we can work in a variety of different ways with respect to what you and the employer feel is best. But quite often, most of the time, what we'll do is we'll go in, conduct the department-level meetings, once to twice a year, really getting the information out there about why is it so important to save for retirement? So it's eye-opening. The vast majority of the employees that we talk to really have no idea how much they should be saving for retirement, if anything, in addition to their pension. But in those cases, even when they fully fund the pension, social security, in most cases, people still need additional money set aside for retirement because, of course, pension plan is, the cost of living adjustment on that is subject to legislation. So it's not given, you know, every year. So inflation can erode purchasing power of those pension dollars as folks move to retirement. So very important, you know, for inflation, medical expenses, so on and so forth, that folks do have additional funds set aside to be able to maintain or even improve their standard of living once they step into retirement. But we can work individually with your employees in helping them decide how much do they need to be saving? How much can they save right now? Really helping them build up some goals and some insight into what their savings need to be and also just helping to sort of map their path along the way. Asset allocation, as far as how they invest their money, we can customize that for each person as well. This plan is really as robust and as flexible as about any 457 plan out there in the country right now. And I say that literally. It has so many features and bells and whistles that actually aren't available on all governmental 457 plans. So the State of Alabama has been a fabulous job in really partnering with us and partnering with the entities in making this plan as open architecture as it can possibly be. So there's actually a Roth savings option in this plan that allows people to be able to save on an after-tax basis. That can be helpful for those who are younger, have many years left to retirement because all of the growth can grow tax-free. So if you can envision your 20-something, a 30-something-year-old employees, who may have, you know, 30, 40 years left until retirement, and they're investing all that growth during tax-free, that's often heavily utilized by some of those younger folks. There's also a loan provisions in here. So ideally speaking, you know, you want to be saving for the short term for your immediate emergency funding, just the same as you're setting aside funds for long-term. But sometimes life happens and you have to, and you exhaust those savings and you have to look around with your other financial resources to see what else is available. So folks can actually exercise a loan against their own funds in this program to be able to pay for those things that aren't necessarily captured in that IRS definition of an unforeseeable emergency. There is an income guarantee series of funds in here for some of those more conservative investors who know that maybe they need to diversify out into equities but don't really want the disruption to their income should those equities tank. So there are lots of different features and bells and whistles in this program that can really can, that can help us to customize a true retirement plan for each one of your employees. So I'm not talking here for the last five, 10 minutes. Are there some questions that you all have?
So is this my program? I think one of the 20s, so I left this all out?
And you all can participate too. That's a question we all get. If you'd like to participate, yes.
How is this money invested?
It depends on the individual. So some folks say, you might have some people who are just extremely risk-first. They don't want to take on any market risk. There is a principal protected, stable value fund. Given the interest rates are so low in the economy right now, it's not going to get you anywhere in a hurry. Right on, is it? Is it 1.95 annualized? But again, it's principal protected. It's actually held in trust outside the company. So it's creditor protected as well. Or we have a variety of different mutual fund offerings. People can pick and choose from those. If they want to have their funds professionally managed, we have an arm that can do that as well, so. Target date funds too, where if someone wants to pay for the professional management, they can pick one mutual fund that's allocated across all the major asset classes according to their age. And will become more conservative as they get older.
But they got some risk.
Right. So if they step out into the market in any way, there's going to be fluctuations to their account value if they want to, you know, assume no market risk, they can do that.
How hard is it to roll over? Like I said, it's going to roll over like nationwide or something like that.
It's actually very easy.
Is it?
It is. There's typically, and it varies from company to company, where the funds are rolling from, government nationwide, they have a distribution form that's completed. And then we have an incoming roll-in form that authorizes us to deposit those funds. And it's typically a, you know, 15 to 30-day process.
Nationwide, we have. Brooke, is that?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Nationwide, we got Nationwide, thank you.
We have Nationwide. We only have one current employee that's actively participating in it. And we have six current people that are participating in our same one. But the Retirement Systems of Alabama doesn't come to your work site and explain the different options they have. We offer it to the employees for their first hire. But this program, being able to explain the retirement benefits and helping the employees.
Was it, is that nationwide that I mean?
You don't have anything taken from your check?
No, but I'm just hanging in there with what I got.
And that's what you got.
But it's not hard to roll out?
It's not. And I will say Nationwide is not too friendly on the fixed assets that roll. That's because their account is tied to their, or their fixed account is tied to their general account. So they exercise.
Are you saying, are you any better than Nationwide?
Absolutely. And I can say that with confidence. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I.
That's a very good question.
You always look in the app, huh?
I was going to go answer.
They give me the choice of investing, and it's doing quite well.
It probably has done quite well over the last few years.
Look, I was overseas, but.
One of the key distinctions between this program and the Nationwide program, in fact, I'm putting together several proposals right now for different cities and counties throughout the state that have Nationwide, they're looking at the plan level of moving to a state's plan. They tend to be a bit more fee-heavy. So they have, as known as a variable asset charge tied to all of their funds that's in addition to the expense ratio. So you're looking at effectively, for most of the plans that I'm putting together, plan-level proposals for, it's effectively twice the cost to those participants to be able to hold their assets with Nationwide. Also, they, we're actually the leading provider of deferred compensation plans in the marketplace. Nationwide is the lead number four. So they're, they're a leading provider, but they're, you know, they're not quite, they don't have quite the scale that we do, which of course translates to, you know, we're able to offer most of our participants and plans at much lower costs. So, but also, again, from the fee transparency, we take that very seriously. Looking at this from a technical perspective, a 457 plan is technically what's called a non-ARISA plan. 401ks, 403bs, so on and so forth, those are ARISA plans. So technically, from a fee transparency perspective, we're not required to be as transparent on 457 plan. But when I say "we," I mean it's the industry. Empower Retirement adheres to the best practices of ARISA plans. So we are just as fee-transparent on our 457 plans as we are on all of our 401ks that we administer and other plans. So we feel very strongly that participants and plans should know exactly what those fees are that folks are paying.
Would you talk about a 457 plan for this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This would be a governmental 457.
But you won't come in and talk to all of our employees?
Would love the opportunity.
Well, I mean, so. Do you do this on their time or our time?
We would do it on, well, I guess it will be the county's time, if that answers your question. Typically, based on the employer, it's, the number of days would be based on the number of employees the entity has. So for your size, we're probably looking at about one to two visits per year. But since we are where we are within the government markets, we actually have it down to fine science with respect to how we conduct those meetings so that it is minimally invasive with respect to, you know, them getting their work done. Because obviously, if we're here every couple of weeks, every month, if you've been trying to get business, it's not productive for you, or it's not productive for anybody. But it's extremely important that they do properly plan for retirement. When we visit with your employees, our goal is to be able to sit down with each employee once per year. That individual consultation lasts, on average, about 20 to 25 minutes. So within that 20 to 25-minute time period, we can take them from sitting down having no clue really as how prepared for retirement they are, being able to walk them through about a 10 to 12-minute consultation on, this is where you are right now. This is about how much you need to be saving for retirement every pay period. Then some decisions are made. They go ahead and enroll in the plan. The State of Alabama has actually worked to make this enrollment extremely efficient. So it's a one-page enrollment. So it takes about, if they want to enroll, you know, maybe three minutes or so to complete the form. So it's a very streamlined process. And we want to be minimally intrusive, but maximum output for, you know, for all of you and for your employees, really. Most people, by and large, and sadly, in the governmental market space, are not nearly as prepared for retirement as they should be. Particularly governmental employees oftentimes prepare the least because there's so much dependency on the pension plan. Actually, only a small percentage of those employees stay around long enough to be destined. So it's very important that people be saving for retirement. You're with us, you know, with other counties, 30-plus years, that's great, so.
Do we need a motion?
Can we tell them the minimum and the maximum that they can participate?
Yes, absolutely. Minimum can technically be set by you all as the employer. Most plans, about $10 per pay period is the minimum. Maximum is capped by the IRS. For this year, if you're younger than 50, up to $18,000 that employees can put into the plan. If you're 50 or over, it's $24,000. Once you get over the final three years, you can actually do $36,000.
We can hear that.
No.
We don't see a lot of $36,000, they're getting what they need.
We'll have to put in a payroll deduction. But what a lot of people are looking at is will the state continue to offer their RSA-1? Or are they going to switch over and start going with Empower? Where what you're currently offering wouldn't be an option anymore?
We haven't heard anything about RSA-1 going away. Not for my new salary.
But you're representing, you're not from the statewide, I don't know.
I'm sorry, sir.
You're representing the company. And then, so if someone else comes in here and does the same thing, we have to give the privilege of them awesome.
Right. So if you do come out with RSA-1.
You're a condition of another retirement company. So that would look like leaving. You'd be contacting people on their own town. Just anyone else would say, you know, if someone came next week, we've got another plan, it'd be another 30 minutes or hours probably.
Right. RSA-1, they, our understanding and our experience in working sort of alongside them within the state, they actually go, they will only go to an employer if you have 50 or more people sign up that will come to a group meeting. So there have been a lot of employees, there are even cities in the state that don't even have 15 employees that have literally never seen an RSA-1 representative. So they don't typically do a tremendous amount in the way of the employee consultations because they do have that minimal number of folks who have to agree to come to a meeting before they'll actually go. So for your 457 plan, the only options that you would really offer at the county level would be RSA-1 and then also the state's deferred compensation program, if you, if you pass this, to bring this onboard.
So what I'm understanding, from what she said, from what you say, RSA doesn't really, or got rid of meeting with employees really that much. And therefore, it would take somebody like her to come in to be able to, in other words, to not get personal service, really, somewhere.
Yeah. I'd let them, the employees know where they are, if there's an option. Myself and my father, if they participate in RSA-1.
Right. And they always help people there.
I'd like to do it over old times.
But you are working with them.
We don't work with RSA-1. They're actually, RSA-1 is actually offered by the retirement services.
Does the State of Alabama, if you.
They offer that, exactly. They offer that, but they actually administer their own 457.
But I'm saying, if somebody got in, what you're going to do, and the State of Alabama would offer from them?
They wouldn't prosper. In fact, you're actually paying for this plan.
The State of Alabama.
Right, yes, sir. The personnel board, they are actually paying, and especially now that we're bringing on local government municipalities, they're paying that per head B rather than passing that on to.
So who is eventually good for it? The State of Alabama, your company, and the employees, is that correct?
Yes, right.
My back, one thing that you asked, if you don't do it as a group, you'll get no participation. She tries to be this individual, they want anybody to do it.
Right.
I can tell you that.
Legally, we couldn't without the, without the plan sponsor provided.
And I'm not saying you should do it. I'm just saying, if you don't do it as a group, with all your employees, nobody will do it.
How can you do it as a group? Because they, they'll do a group double day.
Well, I'm talking about have the group, and everybody listen to it. Then you might have, I don't know how many employees you got, how many do y'all have?
We have.
One, two, please.
150.
Okay. You might have 150, you might have 50 get in. But individually, if you could do that, or whatever, you won't get one, probably.
And the state's paying the cost.
Right. The state picks up all the administrative oversight and the cost for offering this plan.
But they've already, employees have, they're all totally.
Well, that would be y'all if it was done during your working hours. But right now, y'all are also offering now, and I talked to the employees about RSA-1 and Nationwide. But the state's actually going through Empower to offer this to all cities, local government, and state employees. So the state's already using Empower Retirement as another option for deferred compensation.
That's the only one they use?
Yes, sir. We administer.
Well, if I was an employee and I was, you know, thinking, well, I'm not getting much help. And I'm no Einstein, I need help to talk to somebody about retirement anyway. I would want to talk with some, I would, you know, I would think that that's not a benefit to me if I was to talk to the first friend.
We need a motion to, for her to set this up?
There's a form in there also, I think it's on the version, and start through the joiner agreement. That's actually all that the county would need to sign to be able to participate in the plan, to be able to offer this to the employees. There are no contracts. All the contracts are actually held to the state. This is just a participation agreement that the county signs to say, yes, we will agree to offer this plan to the employees.
That's just for.
And then, then, would be a meeting, everybody come together for you to present this program.
Sometimes what we do is like department head meetings.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have any problem with it. They're the best, you know.
Safety meetings, you don't have any?
Yes.
Safety meetings, you don't have any?
Think about it. If you have it on county time, you'll have participation. If you don't near time?
We don't have that. We don't have that before.
That is very.
We just need a motion to see if they participate in it. That's all we, okay. We got a motion?
And, and, Chairman, and to set the minimum and the maximum. I would set the minimum as $10 and then do a maximum as the IRS requirements.
$18,000? And this one myself?
How, how would the board get paid? Twice a month?
Every two weeks.
So it would be 20 bucks a month, their members, is that correct, what she said?
20, 20 bucks a month?
That'd be their.
And this is if they elect to participate.
That's the minimum?
That's the minimum.
That would be the minimum if they elect to participate.
$10 per pay period is what she said, so.
Well, this is offering our employees something in the future. I may, if they so desire to be.
David, this is what David Bronder does, is that correct?
He had announced those RSA-1.
I understand that. So this has nothing to do with him?
Exactly. Nothing to do with him.
But you contract with RSA.
We contract with the state's personnel board.
State personnel.
Right. It's RSA-1 technically is a different entity altogether. Because obviously.
So you may or may not be as successful as he is with his investment.
We actually.
Because he's actually not.
You got to say?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
You got it.
You got it.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm going to have a bunch of wristwings.
Let's move on, I gotta go.
Okay.
Did you sign the agreement?
I don't have one.
Right there.
One of these first, these pages here.
Oh, I know, I'm sure I'm there. It's right here.
I'll hide them out there. There it is.
Believe me.
There we go. And this was, like, this section up here, this would be right here. Yes, sir. And I'll get a copy of this back to you all as well. And then going back to Brooke.
When will, will packets be available for employees that maybe so desire to put this thing?
I will work with Brooke to set up, to provide all of that and then set up some either. Sometimes we start off with department head meetings first. Sometimes we go straight into the departments. So we'll coordinate whatever is going to be, as best as you want. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Y'all have a wonderful day. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Okay, you're up.
I need to follow her.
Be novel for you.
Somebody once said, "Times are a change." You ever heard that?
Yeah.
So I said that, say this. On Wednesday, July 29th, we're having a marriage law conference in Tuscaloosa, right at the law school. And I'm here to ask you guys to cover the cost of me attending that conference. It's going to be covering the United States Supreme Court law decision that we all know, we've been on the news forever, about, say you say, marriages. Not only that, that that conference will be about there, it'll also be about common law marriage. And it will also cover some things besides marriage, including conservatorship, guardianship, and adoption. Anyway, times are changing. I guess I'm the first pro-bate judge that's ever had to face what we're having to face this day and time about these type of things. So I'm asking you guys to consider covering the cost of that conference, which is registration, 150, and then, you know, mileage, whatever else is in cost, it's going to be minimal, but it's a one-day conference. And so I want you to consider that. And that's all I have. You didn't go to sleep when I talked, huh? We're good.
You didn't give it a chance.
And by the way, today's the deadline for me to sign up for that conference. That's it.
Oh, do we need a motion or have a motion for paper for we judges to school?
I'll make that motion, we do.
About a second?
I'll swing it.
I have a question. Oh, wait, wait.
Go ahead.
Is this not what you went over for the end of the day that we paid you for?
We went over some of this stuff. Joe and I did. It sounds like what you're saying that this conference does, and probably go in some more detail about. We went over some of this stuff, uh, Joe's idea, uh, it sounds like what you're saying that this conference does, and probably go in some more detail about, uh, different aspects of the marriage. While not just the same-sex stuff, but coming along with, and then conservatorship, guardianship, and adoption, which that stuff is changing as well.
The vast majority of it's gonna be about the Supreme Court decision, though, that's, it's gonna be.
Well, what can you do about the current Supreme Court decision?
Nothing, it's talking about how we gotta handle, and so.
Well, if you can't do it, the employees, how you gonna handle it?
It can't be what?
If you can't do nothing bad, how you gonna handle it?
Well, we're not gonna change your decision, but it's gonna be discussing how to handle this decision. Because.
To keep yourself lawsuit, so like, what?
There is, there is still nothing but mass confusion about this whole plan, and, uh, and I mean, Scott can probably attest to that to a certain extent, but, uh, everybody still has opinions of which way they have to do and how they rule, uh, about this ruling. And, uh, so, uh, you know, we still don't have one hundred percent participation from all sixty-seven counties in handling the Supreme Court's decision exactly the same way. And, and we probably won't bice when we come out of that conference either, to be true.
I sound sad, I mean.
Everything.
I, I, but how can, how can, if there's a Supreme Court ruling, how can one be this way, the other be the other way, I mean, is there?
You can, you can, I mean, there's still, there's still options out on the table, I hope to learn some of those. But, uh, one thing that we can do, that we're still doing, is that you can either issue all the licenses or none. Now, uh, some counties are doing that, we've had a tremendous amount of people from other counties coming to our county, buying their marriage license here. Uh, the counties prospered by that, uh, those counties that are turning them away are losing money by doing that. And, uh, but we can also stop tomorrow, or today, so we're not issuing anymore, and send them to another county. I have a hard time with that. Now, uh, and the main reason is, is that, uh, you know, since, uh, since I made the decision that I would issue the license to everybody, I hadn't had one same-sex couple come in, but I've had many, many heterosexual couples come in. I think we're mistreating citizens of our county, if we say, you gotta go to France, or to Japan, or wherever it is, I, I think that's just absurd to do that. And, uh, so, but it may, it may come to them, I, I don't know. And, uh, then, you know, ceremonies are entirely a different situation, but I'm talking about issuing a license.
Can you, can you issue, can you deny issuing a license to same-sex?
Yes. I can deny, here, all license.
With all, but not, not just those in particular?
No, well, it's either all or none.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I don't.
Now, with the Supreme Court ruling the way it is, all or none, isn't that, I don't know whether you agree.
And, and one thing that I think these conferences will lead into as well, is that this, uh, this is, goes beyond just issuing the license, I mean, it permeates through, just writings, I know there's a lot of conservatorship, guardianships. It comes into play there, adoptions, it comes into play there, about how, how to interpret the law in relation to adoptions, and it's, it's more than just issuing a license or not issuing a license.
But to go back to your question, I could absolutely just take a stand, and I wouldn't issue a license to same-sex, but we'll know, in the way you're looking at the lawsuit, we're gonna have, I mean, that's, so, that's.
We ain't gonna have one.
You what? You what?
We don't have one, you gonna have one, as long as you're on the fee system, it's your baby right, you call the shot, and Mitchell, I'm gonna do it.
Okay, well, that, we disagree on that, but that's, that's, that's your opinion.
That's the law, that's what it is.
That's your opinion, and, and I have a different opinion.
Well, it's always.
Because I work for the same people that the revenue commissioner does, and, and that the D O S officer.
Just a shit, yeah, and low.
Uh, I understand that, and I work for the same people, and, and I hope someday that we can get past the fact that.
Maybe so.
That I'm on the fee system, and, and not a county employer, and my office has nothing to do with the county, because it certainly does. And, uh, and for anybody, for anybody to deny that, I think that looking back way years ago, when we were in, you know, behind the times, there are sixty, uh, and I will go on this, keep you guys tied up, I know you said you had to go. But, uh, there are sixty-five counties in this state that have progressed to the modern-day times of the way they handle a probate judge, and the probate judge's office. Us, along with Monroe County, are two that's still behind the times considerably, Monroe County is the other one, and they're changing after this term. So, uh, if we wanna pride ourselves on being the very last one, then I guess we're gonna be there, do you want?
I'm not arguing which is better, or which, which one's better.
But whoever's looking at the choices. Do what?
The choice was made.
By?
By whoever, back then, they, they decided go with the fee.
Well, back, back.
So if you go, if you make this choice, you go with these rules.
But back in the day, I think, the majority of counties were fees.
Until that's reverted, and go to the fee system.
That's right.
Or the salary system, then, uh.
Yeah, and, but, but there's a lot of things we can discuss on that, and we will.
I thought, I didn't say, I thought, you was there, I don't.
And, and you, I, I need another example of that, why it's not, not in the modern times, and not fair, we've got two people that's in the tag office, for instance, one is a county employer, one is not. Carries the county benefits with it, and the other one doesn't have anything associated to that, both of them do the exact same jobs, doesn't make sense. Uh, I know whether counties believe it does either, except Monroe, when they're changing also, so. I gotta ask a question, since y'all are all together, did y'all, is there a timetable that y'all want to get together to, to work out, or build, because y'all talked about it? No, we don't have a time, well, I, well, I, maybe you want to make. Before, but, I want, I want to accomplish that sometime in this term, because it goes with the fed, and the next term, whatever we do. Yeah, I mean, we're, there's no timetable, we gotta get it done next week or next. Your, your idea is that you want to get together in this term, to them, to, to work out a bill? Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think, God, why, is, can that happen without the representative, or through the state?
Has to go through the state.
No, it does have to go through the state representative, and, and.
Then it'll be after his term is out before.
That's when it would get implemented, is the next term.
That's correct.
Um, what we've been told previously is if the commission and the private judge agree on it, we can submit a bill to them, and they'll present it.
But before, they never agreed on it?
Well, actually, I understand that y'all did have an agreement at one time, but, uh, but it never got done.
We don't, we, this takes the way the law was written.
But it's, it's something that should not be that difficult to accomplish, I don't think, I mean, that's my opinion, but, uh, but I think we're all reasonable people, I think it can be done. And, uh, and it is hard, and, and one of the reasons it needs to be changed, and I know we didn't come, I didn't come here to talk about this part of it, but the reason it needs to be changed is just because, so that, so that the, the county, the people in this county that we all serve, whether we're in the revenue office, or the sheriff's office, or wherever we are, are all equal and treated the same way, instead of the probate office being saying, hey, you're, you're all on your own, we get sued, it's you, not, not the county. We're not hoping anybody gets sued, that's not what this is all about, uh, but.
But if all right, like, oh, Rocky, yeah, there's nobody over there, county, and all in the office.
That's correct.
I mean, you know, why do we pay the bill, whether or not we're all?
Why do we do that?
Why do we do that?
I don't know, we have clothes, you know?
I mean, we, we pay what we promise?
Because there's no mu, there's no money there to operate that office without what we get from the county.
Yeah, it did when in thirty years.
Do what?
How'd you done it, and it did for thirty-five years.
Well, one of the, one of the ways they did it.
I mean, I don't understand.
We give the same money to them, yeah, we give the same money to them.
Yeah, you did give the same, I guess you've always done it.
Yeah, we knew that.
But, uh, but one of the ways they did it was with, with one less employee, and yeah, they did it, not very efficiently, but they did it, we, I had hired one.
We laid a lot of time, and not do a good job now.
Well, that's right.
A lot of time.
That's right.
I don't know, I mean.
And I said this, and I said this earlier too, times are a changing.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're, you take, you take, for an instance, uh, the tag office, I mean, we changed, we put additional work on those girls, and, uh, just since I've been there, three times. Because the laws have changed each time, each year, I, I expect that to continue.
Times are changing, now that's the way I'm going, it's gonna have a five, gonna start.
Yeah.
Times are changing.
That's, that's exactly right, and, uh, whatever you gotta do to meet those times, and do what you gotta do, you gotta do what you gotta do, so, uh.
We need six or seven, and we got, I got thirty, doing two hundred and fifty-four mile road.
And I'll, and I'll just say again, you guys are county commissioners. You're tired, you got the road responsibilities, plus the entire rest of the county to deal with, not, not this road to me.
You tell me what county commission can empower, when you go down to Montgomery, you take, you know, all the money away from them, a hundred thousand dollars, code tax service, tax away from them, can't you give it to the C D F? Well, we can empower it, they do it down there, and we don't do it.
Yeah, well, I know where you are on some of that, I, I, I can sympathize with that, I know what you're.
Come to extra money, it's not there.
I got a motion, and a second, all in favor?
Well, it's not the hundred fifty, a hundred fifty is not much, but, uh, next week, it may be another, and another, and another. If this was a lot, a hundred fifty, it'd be the last, I, I don't have a problem with it.
It will not be the last, I'm sure of that. Because the way things are, it won't be the last. In fact, I'll tell you now, October, we got election conferences coming up, you know, now, the sheriff attends that, the board of registrars attend that, uh, the sergeant clerk will attend that, uh, probate judge's office attends that, I am the chief election officer in this county. Um, there's no way I can afford to attend these kind of conferences and pay for them myself, that's not possible. So that one is also coming.
Who have a good plan for?
I have no idea.
County, you got a good plan?
Can you tell us, Brooke? Now, the only ones that we pay for are the board of registers, and we get reimbursed from those from the state of Alabama, Kevin's been paying for his own.
These conferences are expensive, I don't say they're not, this one's not, of course, but some of them are, this one's a one-day deal, that one'll probably be a two, two-day deal. And, uh, but, you know, they're, uh, that's the way things are now, we have to have these, I don't know if they used to have them, to be true, but I assume they did. But, uh, they've had them ever since, uh, I've been here. And, uh, they will cover, you know, we have new election office to deal with. Uh, different, like, last time, we had, we put in, uh, which was my first election, that happened, we'll be a part of, we had the brand-new machines, that y'all are aware of, I guess. And, and that, so there was a considerable amount of training going on, and we've been through one election, but, but, uh, there's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be some more new stuff coming up and down this year, whatever's changed, and, and that's what they have us for, and the reason they, uh, uh, the reason they have the conferences, to keep people updated, where they need to be, what they need to know, to be able to have an election. And as y'all also know, you don't have election problems, so, that one's gonna be coming too, that's. I could tell you a lot more about the expense, but like I said, I, I didn't come over here for all of that, but I'll be glad to get back with you and tell you about this stuff. Uh, besides the additional, of additional employee that I hired, our costs, uh, are less now than what they previously been, because we reduced the cost of what we charged to do some of the things in the probate office.
You reduced them?
Huh?
You reduced the price?
We did, uh, by law, uh, just recording pages, for instance, on deeds, or mortgages, or anything else, it was, it's three dollars per page. That was being charged at three dollars and fifty cents a page, which is a significant amount of money when you realize what, what we do recording. And, uh, but it's by law in state Alabama, code book that, uh, charge three dollars a page. And I, I hadn't been in office two days, and when I was told by the state auditor, you need to change that immediately. And my question was, why hadn't it already been changed, well, they didn't answer that, but I did, I changed it immediately.
Changed from three fifty to three.
Yeah, so that's fifty cents for every page that's recorded in our office, which is a significant amount of money.
I wrote it there, and that's.
Okay, you can drop it.
Thank you. See you.
That's just, you know, I. I don't know when would be a good time to get off the fee system, onto the salary system, and at the rate everything's going, I don't know if it would be, the county could afford the salary system.
What's all about salary? I got salary, it'd be easy for it.
Yeah, you, if you worked in our state.
Well, the, the salaries are different, for different posi, uh, positions in the county, I mean, I understand that, but that's, that's why they are what they are, they're different for a reason. And, uh, uh, so we'll have to agree on what that is, but I'm all in favor of changing it, and I've, I've said that for years, and I'm still saying that. And, uh, I want us to become modern, and in the, in the, in the day and age that things are, uh, and we can, you know, better suit and treat our citizens of the county, because like I say, we're kinda, we're kinda not treated as part of the county, by the county.
But, in regards to that, they never been, they never would be part of the county.
But who never had?
Well, the last one, she says she.
Well, I mean, maybe they did, but I'm, I'm not the last.
That's what I'm saying, but, I mean, you know, it sounded like she was waiting on us, but it wasn't us, she wasn't on it anyway.
I'm, I'm all for it.
She said she wasn't a state employee, or a county employee.
Yeah, well, I disagree, I, I think, uh, I wanna change it, I'm, I, I think, I don't think there's any question about it, like Kenny said, we're not a county employer, we're not, but, but I think we are, we're just as much a part of the county as, as the sheriff or the revenue office is. But we are not looked upon as that way, and, you know, Kenny said that himself, so, uh, I think we need to, uh, I think we need to get into the modern times and start being like, like the rest of the state is. Back a hundred years ago, or less than that, most of the counties were on the fee system, now, they've changed for a reason.
Yeah.
And, uh, as supposedly for the betterment of the whole county, uh, not, it's not, it's not for the betterment of me. You know, I want that changed for the next term, whoever's in there in the next term, hope it's me, but, uh, if it's not, it's gonna be changed, it'd be better if we can get it done in this term, it'll be changed for the next term.
What's the advantage of one over the other? I mean, I'm a new boy here, and fee versus just the salary, what?
Transparency was one thing, wasn't it?
Transparency is a big thing, I mean, I can keep everything a secret if I want to, now I haven't done that, as, if I did, can attest to that too, but, uh, that's a.
Clue, or they might.
That's a, that's a big part of it, I mean, right now, nobody has to know, can, you know, if they don't wanna know anything, they don't have to tell, I mean, that's, that's fine, but I, but I will tell you, anything you do wanna know, uh, I'll be prepared to, uh, whenever we do start talking, I tell you what money comes in. Of course, y'all know what money that I pay now, uh, which is, you know, on average, about thirty thousand dollars a month that I send to the commission. And, uh, well, that's a, that's a drop, but it's what we send to everybody else. And, you know, state Alabama gets a ton of our money that we collect for them, y'all get that much, and then the cities, and, and the, uh, elite of our county, and the schools, and, uh.
We get, we get thirty thousand dollars, but we dis, we disperse it between the cities.
Yeah, I don't know what you do with it, I'm just saying, that's what I get, I'm just saying, and then I, I disperse it for the cities too.
Well, what?
A court, a big court, and I'll bet around twenty thousand goes to the public water authority from the boat and sales tax.
So, so, I write a check to you, and then you write it to them, I guess.
Yeah, so we, the county commission.
Wouldn't be much.
Well, you're still part of, I mean, that's part of the county, so I'm just saying, I give you thirty thousand, and it might be thirty-five thousand, one month, it might be twenty-eight, I just, thirty thousand, and I'll write it off.
Okay.
And hopefully, it would be better, if, if our, if our county were to grow, it would grow, but, you know, things are now, we don't have the recordings, we, even the first year I was in office, we don't have the amount of recordings we did, not only reduce them fifty cents a page, we're doing less of them. Because of the economy, uh, the same thing is true, that we did, uh, fifty marriages a month when I came in, we're not doing that now, that's changed. And, uh, and it could go to zero, like I said, if we, you know, we just wanted to say, okay, we're not gonna do anymore, but we don't want that, that, that's, that's not free, oh, for that.
Oh, okay, we had a, a motion, a second, Kenny voted yes, so. You're good.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Bob, you, you, you voted no, or?
No, I, until, so things change, I can see changing the rules until the ru, until the situation changes.
What, what, and what rules you're talking?
Well, if you're on the law, they're on the fee system.
Oh, so, okay, but again, I will say, and I know y'all haven't voted, so I guess I'll just shut that, but the point is.
I sympathize with you.
Yeah, but the point is, they never had a marriage law conference before, didn't need one, you know what I'm saying? I said, they never had a marriage law conference before, because they didn't need one, I'm the first, you're the last, they were same-sex marriage.
I guess it'd be the same thing the next time, for the next, whatever you said was coming up in three months.
I'd be election, election conference, what it is.
So you'll have to come back?
I'll, I'll be glad to come back, tell you what, what the cost of that one is supposedly gonna be, because I don't know exactly what it is yet, but it'll be higher than this one. So vote is four to one.
I didn't have to vote.
Well, three, excuse me, three to one, votes three to one, huh?
One to, yeah, three.
I, I'm not voting against you, because I think you, I respect you.
I, I under, I understand that, and I appreciate your occasion on it, but, uh, I think, I think from what I'm hearing, we got a lot to talk about. You know, because I want you guys to know.
Just gotta change the, change the game.
I want you guys to know what we're really up against, and what we, what, you know, what we need to do.
I don't think.
I certainly don't wanna change from fees or salaries, because I call it's bad for the county. I'm just simply saying, I've got a lot of information that I can give you, that later date, that other counties, and why they change, and what they do, what they do, and their budget, my budget's, you know, forty-something thousand dollar a year, and, and a lot of cases, theirs is three hundred thousand dollar a year, for same five counties.
Where do you get money from?
Uh.
The county commission surely don't fund it.
Yeah, they do, county commission does some, yeah.
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, well, yeah, some of them are less than that, but, uh, they're.
We can, we can fund thirty thousand, unless it's three hundred.
There, there is, uh, there's a lot of cases, even, even, uh, take Winston County, for instance, when they were still on the fee, which they were prior to this term, uh, county commission paid a lot of their employees, y'all probably know that already, I don't, I guess I'm not telling anything to you there. But they paid for, for her employees, and, and their chief clerk, uh, even when she was on the fees, and paid her salary, or her fee salary somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, it's not that much now, since they went on the fee, uh, on the salary, uh, and they have, they have taken in all of the, uh, employees now, of course, which I think she was paying two of. I think she was paying two of them, and they were paying for three. And, and I might be off on that one way or the other, just one number, but I think that's what it was. Now, her salary in Winston County is a hundred and four thousand dollars. So she, she took a cut in pay coming off the fees. Uh, my salary last year was seventy-three thousand dollars. Now, that's, that's being on the fees. And, uh, and that's not for the county, but that's real close. It's, you ever paid a hundred or two. And, uh, but I could easily increase that to a hundred thousand dollars just by laying off an employee, which I don't, you know, we can barely make it on what we got now sometimes, and that's, uh, you take, for instance, somebody sick that takes a day off for vacation at the wrong time, that's a, that's a bad situation. And see, people can't control when they're sick. I don't love to take vacation when, at other times, so, so I control that part, but I can't control being sick. But sometimes we're getting real mad, and, uh, y'all, y'all come by business sometimes at the right time to say what I'm talking about.
Sometimes we get real mad.
Yeah, I, I understand you do. I understand you do. And, and it's all of our job to fix these problems. That's what y'all do, and that's what I do.
Yeah. I've got a road code, I've got one man off and one man over there. I do have two parts I think, and I got forty-eight road codes and forty-eight covered land to put in, please, so.
I'm not doing it to activate or nail for this and that, but I, I can, I can, you know, I was, I was born and died, there wasn't last night. I can give you a few suggestions. And I'll, I'll listen to you, y'all, right?
Just believe it, pause.
No, no, not that. No, I think that's not it.
Okay.
But I thank y'all, three times. Thank you very much.
Just, sir. Okay, Jamie Miles, you're up.
Thanks, sir. Got a tough act to follow here. The ACCA conference is coming up next month, and.
You're up. All right, you're behind.
Yes. Uh, safety meeting down there, that maybe the DM plus or breakout session, remarks and managers. And our continuing education units now require us to go to these common asking permission to go to the ACCA conference.
How many weeks you gonna be gone?
How many weeks?
Yeah. I was gonna go, you're going on?
Just wanted to be there in the back, uh, to that conference.
Tell you. How much money goes to conference?
One second. One second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay.
One other thing, real quick, safety, uh, issues, safety meetings, still like a couple meetings with the district hands. I'm working on a plan to give with y'all to get those out of the way. I'm trying to get everything done by the ACCA convention, and I get with y'all on some safety topics and see what y'all would like to do on that, so I'll be calling you about that, what kind of ideas y'all have on those.
I've got two more meetings for the year.
Two more meetings for each district. The two-way shop, Curtis had one the other day, and we're pretty much getting ready to roll all this up and, and hand it in to the ACCA at the end of the year.
Well, we've been to the same meeting.
Curtis had one last Thursday.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be a big, get everybody together, and have little ones at your shop. He had, he had an issue, and he, he just had a little quick safety meeting, and everybody signed a paper, and they got his out of the way.
It ran low, it didn't there?
It, it was one of them.
Spur them home?
Yeah, they didn't have their own little safety meetings, so.
Okay, sounds good. Learn all the things.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Need, uh, motion both the inmates, city inmates, lockup fee, twenty-five dollars. Twenty-five dollars per night. I got a motion.
Does this look sure?
No, he probably wants thirty-five, forty, but we could have twenty-five. I don't know. Well, he'll get five. He don't, he don't have a five-dollar charge on it regardless from food, I think he says. So, am I right, bro? He'll, it'll be like twenty-five dollars lockup fee and thirty dollars per night for the inmate, because five dollars will go, I think.
To the sheriff, okay.
Yeah, five dollars for the food bill.
That'll continue. That'll continue separately.
Yes. Yeah, he says he don't think for that, I think.
Yeah.
Without that, so. What we're saying, if it costs us eighty, ninety-two dollars, or whatever, around ninety dollars for the first night, it's sort of, you're really going backwards. You don't charge something, you know? I mean, really, uh, so. Um, I need a motion. We're lit.
Take, take the, the kind of budget for a meeting.
I forgot to leave that out of October one.
October one, effective October one?
Yeah, that's what we talked about one time before, I think. You made a micro motion? I hear a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Go, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That'd be three to nothing.